Well, I'd certainly like to call the Liquor and License Commission hearing to order. Do I need the virtual meeting message already?
No, we'll do that at the start of the regular meeting.
Okay, well, roll call, please.
Liquor Commissioner Byrne.
Aye.
Deputy Commissioner Cook.
Here.
It will be me.
Deputy Commissioner Cook.
Yes, here.
Deputy Commissioner Schultz.
There.
Okay, we have a quorum of the liquor commission. First item is approval of the November 4th, 2020 Liquor and Licensing Commission minutes.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion is second, roll call.
Deputy Commissioner Cook.
Aye.
Deputy Commissioner Schultz.
Aye.
Liquor Commissioner Byrne.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Number two, Benny's Beverage Depot, 290 Hawthorne Commons, requests a Class B liquor license.
Brad, if you're speaking, you are muted.
I believe it's, and Walt as well.
I'm trying to get Walter on the audio here, one second.
He's here.
He's on, he's just.
I guess the audio is just not working, so he's trying to call into the audio line.
He's muted.
Yeah, all he needs to do is unmute in Zoom.
What's the code for that? Is that star nine? For those of you that use your phones.
No, you click the arrow on the microphone. No, I'm just kidding.
He's the one who knew that.
Yeah, I think it is.
Well.
Walt has gone altogether now. We scared him away.
Well, this is for, you know, as I mentioned earlier, the request for a Class B liquor license for Benny's Beverage Depot. And we have one representative here from Benny's. Your name, please?
My name is Brad Stein. I'm the Vice President for Benny's.
Okay. All right, well. Chief, do you have any words of wisdom for Mr. Stein here?
Yes, sir, as mentioned in the packet, their license application has been sent to state police for verification of the owners. We anticipate nothing will come back, but should, should any concerns be raised, we'll bring that back to the board, to the commission for further consideration. If not, then, then the process will move smoothly and the liquor license will be awarded as directed by the liquor commission.
Okay, well, any commissioners, do you have any questions?
Just one chart. I guess I need staff to remind me again what is encompassed by the B license. I know you're looking for another license category, but I just want to state for the record exactly what B represents.
Sure, Commissioner Schultz, tonight's request is solely for retail sale of packaged liquor for consumption off premise. They're not requesting anything else related to the Class B license.
Okay, so upon opening, should there not be a change in our liquor code? They can only sell liquor off premise. They can't have any tasting or anything of that nature until they make reapplication for a different class code and that we create another particular class to meet their.
Yeah, Commissioner Schultz, that's correct. Their, their plan is to come to a village board meeting to request a that the board consider a new liquor classification that would allow online purchase and delivery of alcohol and wine, but that'll be a separate request. And then for tonight, though, as part of the Class B license, the commission can choose to allow tasting onsite or not. As part of the Class B, they would not need a new classification for onsite tasting, as long as the commission is okay with it.
So the new one is strictly for the online and delivery?
That's correct.
In the future?
That's correct. They'll come back at a later date to present how they want to operate that for the village board to consider the amendment.
Okay.
All right, so if we make a motion, we should then include, if they so desire at this time, to have tastings as part of their.
Yeah, onsite tastings.
Yes, sir.
And that's what you would like, Mr. Brad? You're on mute.
Yes, sorry about that, yes.
Okay.
Well, with, I mean, for the audience at home, this is Benny's and they're looking to replace Hobby Lobby, the Hobby Lobby facility, and I have no problem with that change of use. And I'd be more than happy to make a motion to authorize a Class B liquor license with an addendum that they would be allowing them to hold on premises tastings as part of their operation, especially during grand opening, but as part of their ongoing operation.
Second.
The motion is second. To approve. Roll call, please.
Deputy Commissioner Schultz.
Aye.
Deputy Commissioner Cook.
Aye.
Liquor Commissioner Byrne.
Aye, motion carries. And then, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask what the timetable was. I mean, we've got it coming up later, but I could ask it now, the timetable on, on wanting to be open?
Can we be heard, Kurt?
Walt, you're in on the audio now.
Okay, we're, we're live?
Your audio is live, you can see Walt.
Hello, everybody.
This is who?
Michael Binstein and Walter Fornick.
Okay.
Owner and president of Benny's, Brad Stein is in a remote location. I'm sorry, we had some technical problems. I shouldn't, I shouldn't begin the meeting by telling you how high tech we are, right?
Yeah, don't feel bad.
We wanted to make sure you had a license, so don't screw it up. We're just looking for information on when you're gonna be open.
Yeah, your license is already approved.
Yeah.
All right, that's good news.
Yeah, so when are you gonna open?
May, late May. We're in there now. So hopefully by Memorial Day.
And what does the old Hobby Lobby, about 40,000 square feet?
Forty-seven.
Okay.
Forty-seven.
Is that a typical size for, you know, you guys?
No, we only have one that's larger. It's 50,000 square feet in Chicago, in Lincoln Park. Most of our sizes are around 25, 30.
Oh, okay. All right.
All right, and this will be, it's gonna be on committee the whole later for the project, correct?
Yeah, for the facade, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
All right.
We have a big, a big thrust of our business now. We have, we have a full-time education director and we do a lot of special seminars for where we bring in distillers, winemakers, brewers. And education is a very big focus of ours, and that's why you see a room dedicated, just a large classroom dedicated to that purpose.
And what was it, about 4,000 square feet?
The education area is about 1,100 square feet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we'll get to that in the committee, right? Yeah.
Okay, well, with that said, welcome to town. And also, there's no other business that comes before the Liquor License Commission, correct?
Nope.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some may. Second.
Motion is second, roll call, please.
Deputy Commissioner Schultz.
Aye.
He said aye.
Sorry, I didn't hear that. Deputy Commissioner Cook.
Aye.
Liquor Commissioner Byrne.
Aye. Motion carries, the meeting's adjourned.
Thank you very much. Walt, some tips on Zoom and whatever for the next time we'll see you in 20 minutes, half hour.
Okay, all right, thanks, Walt. We stay on the line, so we don't. Okay, good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Like to remind everybody that tonight's meeting obviously is being zoomed to watch and listen via virtual meeting Zoom link. It's, it's, you know, it's on our website. But let's see what else. All right. First order is roll call. We are conducting this meeting tonight by Zoom in light of the ongoing pandemic and the continuing declaration of disaster by the governor. I have determined that in-person village board meetings are not practical or prudent at this time due to the ongoing public health emergency. Okay, roll call.
President Byrne.
Here.
Trustee Markwart.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Schultz.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Takaka.
Here.
Trustee Forster.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum present. Would everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Thank you. Are any citizens that wish to address the board tonight?
No, sir, there were not.
Okay, well, I have a proclamation that I'd like to go to. As part of Village's senior outreach initiative, village staff has been reconnecting with both independent living seniors as well as residents of congregate living facilities. Staff learned that Vernon Hills resident Genevieve Lang will be turning 100 years old on Monday, February 22nd. Miss, how you doing, Miss Lang? Miss Lang is a longtime Illinois resident, raised five children, has 11 grandchildren and two great-grandchildren and many friends. Miss Lang always wears a flower in her hair, a smile on her face, enjoying her heart. Well, happy birthday, Genevieve. From the village of Vernon Hills. Yeah.
Birthday.
Centenarian, I believe they're known as.
Yes.
It's a very small club.
No kidding. Okay.
Happy birthday.
Well, happy birthday. So, next item is village manager Fleischauer.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple things. First of all, just a reminder that earlier this evening, Mayor Byrne signed Declaration 21-04, which extends the state of emergency, which was declared by the mayor in March, shortly after Governor Pritzker declared a state of emergency for the state of Illinois. The state of emergency will remain in effect until the end of the pandemic, essentially whenever the governor gives the all-clear and cancels his emergency declaration. The next thing I wanted to ask you about, or first of all, is future meetings. Do you, are you interested in going to in-person meetings beginning the next board meeting? Since we're up to a 50-person capacity at this point?
Yeah, I would think so. I mean, we're into phase four, so.
Yes.
I have. Okay, see, I've got three yeses.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a yes.
Okay, we got a fourth. That's good. All right, which is probably just as well, the next board meeting will begin our, our public presentations of the 2122 annual budget. And those are always good to do in person. So look forward to seeing everyone's smiling face at the dais next, next month. Next thing I wanted to talk to you about was in your packets this last week, we had the village events plans for 2021. You know, we have a number of events that were canceled last year due to the pandemic. And we just don't know where things are heading for this coming year. It's very, very hard to anticipate what's going to happen. You know, on January 1st, essentially there was a shelter-in-place order. People were told to stay home, not be with their families for the holidays. Restaurants, schools were closed. And then here, you know, roughly 30 days later, we've made a double jump to schools being open for in-person instruction. 50% capacity at the restaurants. But we're also warned that further variants of this virus are out there and we could slide backwards. So with that, I wanted to go over a couple of the events that we have planned this year and kind of give you our thoughts on it. The first one is the Arbor Theater series of events. We have a number of outdoor concerts that we plan every year. I believe under our current mitigation standards, the capacity of, of gatherings of 50 or less, we can move forward with the Arbor Theater concert series. We generally have fewer than 50 people that attend. It's outdoors at the Arbor Theater and there is plenty of space to spread out. And those are done, I believe, on Wednesday nights. It starts when the weather gets nice. I'm not sure of the exact start date. The next one that we move into is the Fourth of July Parade. This is one where we're just a little bit iffy on. With most of these events, we're hoping for the best and we're planning for the best. As you'll see, the next board meeting, we're budgeting as if we're gonna be able to move forward with these events. We just don't know if it's practical. We've had meetings with the, our partners with the police, or the police department, the fire department and the park district, since almost all of our summer events require coordination between all of them. And no one is sure how the, how the parade could function if we were limited to gatherings of 50 or less. It's, even though it's outdoors, it could be very difficult to maintain proper social distancing. And we're just going to wait and see how things develop. As far as the fireworks are concerned, on the Fourth of July, after speaking with the fire department, they're reasonably convinced in the park district, we could move ahead with the fireworks display on, on the Fourth of July evening as long as we don't do the outdoor entertainment, the bands and the concerts and stuff that generally lead up to the fireworks. Those are the things that draw people in and people tend to gather and they, they stick, they put their blankets down, their coolers, and they sit down and relax to watch, to listen to the music, watch the performance, and then see the fireworks. If we limit it to only the fireworks, I think we may limit the gathering, the number of people that are there for a long period of time. People might come together, but there's certainly enough space in Century Park. And hopefully we can, we can keep people socially distanced to maintain a safety factor, unless the board or the governor feels otherwise. The other one is the fishing derby that we do, the Jim Hire Fishing Derby. That one is absolutely out. We've already spoken to the Veterans Administration and their folks are one of the most high-risk groups of people and they're going to protect their folks understandably, so that one will be taking a pass on this year. And that leaves us with two events, one of which is summer celebration. And again, we're gonna be facing the same thing with summer celebration. We just don't know where we're going to be at. We're trying to be cautiously optimistic. We're budgeting for it. But if we do, if we are able to have summer celebration in some form, I don't think it's going to be in the format that most people are used to. You know, we begin planning for summer celebration like in October, the year before. We begin putting down deposits for bands, for sound stages, for equipment, for tents, trailers, carnival, you name it. The planning takes months and months to put that together. If we are able to do something, it's probably going to be on a much less scale, a much less, smaller scale. And we just don't know at this point. It's too early to call. But it's far enough away that we're, like I said, we're cautiously optimistic. The last event.
Far away. It's only two weeks after the Fourth of July.
I get it.
And basically what you said is the Fourth of July, we need to be scattered throughout the greater Century Park location, view that and not have entertainment. And I mean, summer celebration is entertainment and fireworks and also the amusements. And I doubt if the amusement is something that we really want to pursue because you'd have to sanitize every piece of equipment after every person exited or stopped playing or whatever.
No, and as I said, as I said, if we're able to do anything, it's not going to look like it has done in the past. Many of these vendors, whether it be entertainment or the carnival, they're basically saying, we're going to Indiana, we're gonna go to Wisconsin, we're going to Iowa. That's what they did last year. They all left out of state because they were guaranteed gigs, if you will. There were guaranteed jobs down there for the summer. I don't think if we tried to pull this off, we'd be able to pull it off in time. What we're really hoping for is, you know, in the fall, I'm sorry, go ahead, Doc. Oh, okay, I thought I heard you speak up. What we're really hoping is in the fall, you know, we host Oktoberfest. Oktoberfest is later in the season, but the weather has always been so iffy. There's been times when you've been able to send in shorts and t-shirts. The last several years, it's been absolutely miserable, cold, cold, cold and miserable. And the last week in August is when the park district does their Rib Fest. We've already talked with the park district that if we're permitted and if the numbers work out, we'd like to partner with the park district and jump onto Rib Fest a little bit. Maybe take some of the money from one of the other events and put it towards a little bit of better entertainment. If it's, if it permits, we could take the fireworks, we already have deposits for, and put those on, put one of those displays on one of the nights of Rib Fest. Again, that doesn't, you know, we'll just have to play it by ear and try and do what we call a pop-up event. It's one of those events we may not know about until two or three weeks ahead of time. But I think we could pull something together with local entertainment, you know, bands from Vernon Hills in the area. Again, numbers permitting, we think we could pull something together very quickly. We're trying to provide something for the community, something that works, that we can do safely and that we're not gonna get in trouble for creating an attractive nuisance. And if we have a fireworks display, remember, we have two fireworks displays. If we don't get to do it that night, my recommendation would be is to do it on New Year's Eve, like we used to do in the past. That was always a really well-attended event and people have no choice but to social distance in the park when it's, sometimes it's around zero. So they may stay in their cars, go to a parking lot. Some brave souls may come out in the fields and watch the fireworks, but I'm really less concerned about social distancing for that event than I am about the others. So with that, I wanted to open up for maybe your input, discussion, suggestions, et cetera.
Well, you know, it sounds like any, any kind of large gatherings are not the greatest idea yet. Even though people are getting vaccinated and I know some folks, you know, are going for their second shot and others were, you know, waiting for the Johnson and Johnson, you know, one-shot vaccine, but I don't know, you know, this is still, you know, we're still in the pandemic and I, I'd probably say, you know, due to fireworks, but I don't know, you know, about actually doing any of our events, so.
Believe me, I understand. I really do. And that's why we wanted to bring this forward, at least have an initial discussion and get your input on it.
The conventional wisdom now is that it won't be until June until everybody else, in other words, everybody beyond 1A, 1B, 1C, in other words, everybody under the age of 65 and with no exceedingly severe health restrictions can get their shots. They're talking about June now for that. And, and with the weather being what it's been over this week, I think we're gonna lose a week here also, just across the nation. I mean, they've already talked that they've canceled appointments for two days now. Whatever havoc this puts on the distribution system and everything else. So I think everything's gonna get pushed out, so I think July is being a little too optimistic. I think August, late August, early September has some potential.
Well, actually, it sounds, Mark, like you've, you guys have a pretty good handle on it from the way you described your approach to everything. And it's just gonna be a case of plan for the best and see what happens.
That's, that's exactly our philosophy. John, John did a great job of putting together that report. And, you know, we met with all of our partners and we're all pretty much in lockstep with this. It's gonna be dictated, as you said, by how many people get vaccinated, what the timeline is. Even after you have your second vaccination, it's, it's not fully effective for a couple of weeks. So all I suggest is we, we just play it by ear. The only decisions we have to make is we have deposits on the fireworks that were carried over from last year. And we have to let Melrose Pirate Technics know by April 30th what we want to do. So that's still a couple of months away.
What are the options with that?
We either cancel it altogether and we lose our deposit. Or, and it's about 50% worth, or we just have to let them know when we'd like to shoot them off by. And I'm thinking by April 30th, we should have a pretty good idea of where we're at. We should know.
If we stay with the two, we could do them either Fourth of July and Rib Fest or Fourth of July and New Year's, Rib Fest and New Year's.
We have a lot of options.
Yeah.
And that's what I wanted, that's the point I wanted to get across is we have a lot of options. And even if all those things don't work out, we still have the opportunity at some point to do a pop-up event of some type later in the fall.
Mark, what about, is there a a version if the Fourth of July parade, which gets very crowded in Deer Path, is there an idea, maybe we could do a version similar to the Santa Christmas tree lighting idea?
I'm sorry, what'd you say, Doc?
Well, spreading it out more throughout the whole community than just in Deer Path and then.
Obviously, you can't have bands go miles, but maybe there's something.
And, and we're running into the same problem with the Fourth of July parade, those like the marching bands and the the other organized groups that come in, they need commitments because they're getting offers from other places and other states and they're ready to go. I hate to commit to them and say yes and then pull the rug out from under them at the last foot. You know, we can look at the idea of expanding it a little bit differently. And then the other, the other thing we, we certainly would do again, it seemed to be very popular, was the, the Santa parade. Except Santa, the Fourth of July probably isn't that festive. Yes, okay, we might take you up on the sleigh this year if the weather's good, but if it's like it is today, it's, it's gonna really stink.
Hey, we can have a car with Uncle Sam.
There, yeah, there you go. There you go.
So, Mark, I have a question. I have a question. So what, at what point can we gather for a parade? I mean, we're up to 50, then it's what, up to 100? What's after that? Because is there anything after 100 that's been established, other than back to normal, which I highly doubt's happening this year?
I honestly, unless someone else knows, I don't know the answer to that, what the next step is.
So even if it got to 100, we can't have a parade anyway.
It's gonna be very difficult because, you know, the parade, just by its nature, everyone here has been to the parade and you've seen what Sullivan Drive and Deer Path look like. It's shoulder to shoulder from the edge of the curb all the way back past the sidewalk. And you've seen what Sullivan Drive and, and Deer Path look like. It's shoulder to shoulder from the edge of the curb all the way back past the sidewalk. You know, the park district seems to think that we could probably come up with some way of keeping. People distanced. I'm not a hundred percent sure that, that that would work.
Well, you can keep them distant from the street, but you can't keep them distant from one another.
Right. Listen, we can't even keep them distant from the street. Which is, which is why some trustees don't distribute candy.
Well, there, there's more to that than that.
I'm not going there.
So would we consider doing, moving like summer, you know, summer cell to make it a fall cell? And then maybe rope off the area, have some local bands DJ in that area. Up to two hundred people and then just have someone that sort of monitoring that.
Yeah, that's the hope is that we do some type of pop-up event. If, if the opportunity arises, we're certainly going to jump on it. So like Trustee Cook said, we're planning for the best. We're planning for the best and we're hoping for the best and we will make whatever we can work. Promise.
Okay. The April thirtieth, the April thirtieth date, we actually need to give them a day.
Yeah, we, we.
As to when they're, or just to, or just to say we're committing to two.
I think they would accept if, I think they would accept it if we said we're committing to a day. Their issue is, of course, that there are certain dates that they get booked for, you know, everyone wants to have fireworks on the fourth of July. And that's why we pay almost twice as much for a fireworks display on the fourth of July as we do for Summer Celebration, literally. You know, a couple of, two weeks later, we pay half the cost. So if we spread those out to different times of the year, I, I don't think they're going to have a problem with that.
Like a rain day.
There you go. Yeah, exactly.
Okay, well, we're going to bring this back with the budget, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that's all I have for my report.
Okay. Hawthorne Mall Time Capsule.
Good evening, everyone. Within the next few days, information will be forthcoming regarding a ceremonial groundbreaking at Hawthorne Mall. And we are very excited for this celebratory moment. In addition, we have been in discussions with staff from Hawthorne regarding a plan for a time capsule to be prepared. Kristen has been in discussions with the Hawthorne Communication Team. And I'd like to introduce this subject and the initial opportunity to message to your generations from where they're going. Share with, with the board.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. As you know, construction is underway for Hawthorne two point O. Recently, the village was approached by Centennial regarding the collection of artifacts for a time capsule to be held at Hawthorne Mall. Hawthorne Management is seeking input from the village on items that would not only be significant to Vernon Hills. And Hawthorne Mall, but also items that capture memories from twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Suggested items include personal protective equipment to combat COVID nineteen, including masks, sanitizer and gloves. A replica of a gas-powered Vernon Hills Police Department squad car. Newspaper articles from January twentieth inauguration day. A Vernon Hills Dining Guide, a visit Lake County brochure, a twenty-dollar bill. An iPhone and a Vernon Hills High School baseball cap, to name a few. Later this year, Centennial will host an event to activate the time capsule and celebrate the future of Hawthorne two point O. With the board's consent, staff hopes to solicit feedback from the community through social media, Channel Four and the Village Voice. On any memorabilia the community would like to see in the time capsule. Staff is also seeking input from the board on what they would like to say to the future leaders, leaders. And to the community fifty years from now, which will be included in a letter placed in the capsule. At this time, I'd like to ask for the board's input on items they may like to see in the time capsule. Or input they would like to have in a letter to be included in the time capsule.
How big of a box is it that they're intending to use?
You know, they didn't, they did not indicate the size of the, the box, so I guess the sky's the limit. I will find out about that.
I don't think so, but.
Probably going to want to include. Well, no, probably want to include something either of a series of pictures or maybe even a video of a Zoom meeting.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Or just take a screenshot of the group tonight.
Yeah, something like that, you know.
Would we want to have a listing or something of the two thousand and twenty graduating classes from the area, like the high school and the eighth graders?
That's a good idea.
Last pictures, maybe?
Yeah. And maybe a yearbook. From either, you know, the, either the middle schools or the high school.
When, when is the actual. Capsule going to be?
So it'll be, it'll be later this year. They're not asking for items until the deadline is July thirty-first. So you have plenty of time to think about items that you'd like to include. As well as kind of put some thoughts together on what you may want to. Say to the future leaders or the community that they'll read fifty years from now, so plenty of time to do that.
How's about a brick for when they tear down Sears? Right? Okay, well, we can take something from that site, a brick. Like a chair from an old stadium.
Yeah, there you go.
I have pieces of the Berlin Wall.
Right.
If, if the box is big enough, a sign. I don't know, one of the old signs from the mall.
So I guess what we're asking for now is your consent to solicit the community through our communication channels. And get their thoughts on maybe some items they'd like to see in there.
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah.
My only thing is make sure that Purell bottles are empty, because after fifty years, they will leak. That would destroy the contents, so no.
Put it in a plastic bag.
You could put Hostess Twinkies in there and they'd still be fresh.
Try it.
We don't have any Illinois sports champions to put in there either. No Cubs, no Sox, no Bears, no Bulls.
Yeah.
We could talk about nineteen eighty-five again if we wanted to talk about.
Yeah, just to track the years.
Roger.
You're on.
Okay. No, they're doing a, on Marquee Sports, the eighty-five Bears, you know, it's like about an hour program. If you want to watch it and get depressed, then, then you're, you're, you know, it's your prerogative.
All we have, it's all we have, Mary.
Okay, well, moving on, obviously, everybody could give their feedback and, yeah, let's certainly, you know. Get out the word to the residents and let them give us some feedback too, so. And then you might as well find out how big this capsule is.
Yeah.
You know. Okay, what do we got next? Amicus vota jenin?
Make a motion to approve A through H.
Okay. There's a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Trustee Takaoaka.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz. Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim. Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster. President Byrne.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, is there any unfinished or new business that can be forwarded board? If not, we, we need to, we, we have obviously the committee at the hall. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Well, do we, do we include the closed session?
You can, you can do it now or do it after the committee at all.
Yeah, let's do it now because it's actually part of the business meeting.
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, we, we're going to discuss litigation, right, in personnel?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, well, we're not going in the closed session now, but. Okay, is, is the motion to adjourn, was there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
I didn't get who motioned at first.
Schultz did, I think.
Yeah, Schultz did.
And who was the second, please?
Nancy. Did you second it, Nancy?
Yes, thank you.
Your roll call.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoaka.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, I'd like to call the committee at the hall meeting to order. First item is the approval of the committee at the hall meeting minutes of January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Your motion to approve.
Comment.
Motion, second, comments, questions, deletions, corrections. If not, roll call.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoaka.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. First item is Benny's, and the only item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick summary of what they're proposing for their facade renovation. Michael put a color, there it is, a color rendering of what they're proposing. And as everybody knows, Benny's will be located in the space formerly occupied by Hobby Lobby in Hawthorne Village Commons. Shopping Center. The existing facade, which is currently more rectangular in shape, will be reconfigured. To, to form an arched-shaped parapet over the main entrance. There'd be a decorative cornice that would be included at the top of the arch. The overall height of the facade remain, would remain the same at approximately thirty-four feet above grade. The new exterior finishes would include a light-colored faux wood siding, siding on the sign band. That'd be a fiber cement panel-type siding. And then there'd be a darker-colored siding on each side of the sign band, darker brown-type color. The existing brick would be painted, as shown on the screen in front of you, and it would be colors that are complementary. With the colors of the overall shopping center. You'll also note that new surface-mounted wall wash light fixtures would be located in either side of the wall sign. And also on the brick wall under the canopy. So if the committee feels that the facade renovation is appropriate, then staff should be directed to prepare an ordinance. Approving the changes, subject to the conditions that are outlined in your packet. And we have representatives here from Benny's if you have any questions for them.
Okay. Are the folks from Benny's going to speak to this?
Hi, my name, my name's Don Rickard. I'm the architect that's working on the job. I, I don't have any type of a presentation. I think Mr. Atkinson did a good job of describing what we are hoping to do there. We note all of the finishes and colors and things on the elevation drawing that you're able to see on the screen. And, and really at this time, we're just here to answer any questions you may have.
I'm, I'm very happy with what they're proposing. We've come a long way from Dominix when the cement panels were falling off the side of that building. And, and I'm scrambling on the phone because it scared the bejesus out of me and I called up Mike Atkins and said. We gotta do something quick, the walls are falling down. Oh, the, the buildings have come a long way with Hobby Lobby. And this seems like a very, very reasonable adaptation to, to allow them to promote their business. And I'm assuming that the signage is within the code based on their. Square footage or linear footage or frontage.
That's correct. Trustee Schultz, the sign does comply with, with the sign code.
Even the, even the logo with the glass, the why?
Yeah, and I could, yeah, it looks suspiciously like a martini glass to me, but. Yeah, because in this case, the logo is incorporated into the lettering, so the sign code requires. That the logo be included into the overall dimension. Of the sign by drawing a rectangular box around the extreme outer limits of the sign. And that's what's shown in the dotted line on the screen in front of you. If the logo preceded or followed the lettering, then it would be regulated by the height and width of the letters of the sign. And then if it was a standalone logo, it's a maximum of four square feet that's allowed. So in this case, it's incorporated into the lettering and complies therefore with sign requirements.
So it's pretty straightforward. There are no variances. We're looking for anything on, anything related to this renovation.
Oh, yeah, that's correct. The sign as shown before you complies with our sign code.
Motion to approve.
Motion, second, roll call.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoaka.
Aye, and welcome to town. What took so long?
Thank you very much.
Schultz.
Aye, and ditto.
President Byrne.
Aye. Motion carries, yeah, welcome to town, Benny.
Hey, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay. Well, there's no other business that can be forwarded committee to halt. So is there a motion to adjourn and go into closed session to discuss. Personnel and legal.
And pending litigation, correct.
Pending litigation.
Comment.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoaka.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye, motion carries.
So we leave this meeting and re-enter on the other code?
Yes, sir. That's the best way to do it, most secure way.
What's the other code now?
Well, the other link that we got.
That's the other link.
I'm going to give it to you out here.
No, no, I know, I know. All right, well.
I'll.
See y'all in a minute.